I'd like to call the Wilmer City Council meeting of September 2nd, 2014, to order. Kevin, would you please read the roll?
Mayor Yanish. Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Amen.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Dawkin.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
DeBlick.
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Do we have any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda? I have one item, just for information, under the Finance Committee, we will be looking at a third option for the auditorium, and we'll discuss that in Finance. Yes.
Mr. Mayor Pro Temp, I just have a couple of issues bring up underneath, new business.
Topics related to?
Wilmer sign entrances and, well, that's enough for tonight.
Okay, alright, thank you. Right, moving to the consent agenda.
I'll move to approve, Mr. Mayor Pro Temp.
Second.
We have motion in second to approve the consent agenda, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose, that passes. Alright, we've got a few scheduled hearings tonight, we'll move into the first one, special assessments for unpaid hedge removal, and I'll open the public hearing and ask Kevin to explain.
Mayor Pro Temp, members of the council, throughout the course of the year, the Public Works Department or citizens complaining about difficulty to see around an obstructing hedge at the corner, we'll call our office and we'll review that, and if it's a hedge on private property, we will send them a letter directing them to remove that or trim back the hedge to stop the traffic obstruction. We have one case that was done at 1202 Seven and a Half Street, Southwest. Failure of the property owner to take care of that issue, the Public Works Department or its agent goes there and trims back it and bills them for the cost. This cost was not paid by the homeowner. Tonight, we have the hearing for the homeowner to make objections of why he should or should not be paying these bills, and subsequent to any hearing, its staff's recommendation that we assess for these costs, not to absorb them for private work that's to be done, certify it against the property as described.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on that? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and move it to the council.
Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I'll move staff's recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt a resolution certifying the amount of the unpaid hedge removal charges to the county auditor for collection in 2015. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr.
It's a roll call, okay.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Okay, we'll open the next public hearing, having to do with the special assessment for unpaid weed and grass removal mowing. Kevin?
Again, members of the council, you have before you a list of about a dozen property owners who had a grass in excess of the ordinance, and subsequent to those complaints or observations by city staff, these property owners were notified that they should mow their lawn. After the specified time period, failure to do so, the city or its agent went to that property and mowed the lawn. The bills are a variety of bills, as you can see, they were invoiced to the property owner. Failure for them to pay that invoice is what's listed here. It is staff's recommendation that you take testimony from any of these property owners as to why they shouldn't have this bill, and upon hearing testimony, unless they have valid objections, staff recommendation is to adopt an ordinance certifying that amount as listed on each property for collection in 2015.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the audience that wishes to comment on this? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move it to the council.
Mayor Pro Temp, I'll introduce a motion that we adopt a resolution clarifying the amount of unpaid weed and grass mowing removal charges to the county auditor for collection in 2015.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt a resolution certifying the amount of unpaid weed and grass moving removal charges to the county auditor for collection in 2015. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Temp. Kevin, this seems like an awful, or a lot of people. Is this typical, or, and we did send a bill to all of them, correct?
That's correct, and looking at the one in the middle, which is technically five lots, five small lots right in a row, it is clearly not abnormal from an annual certification in this city. Quite normal.
And in the past, have we received collection on the majority of them?
Well, we will receive all of them, we have promises of two of them, and if so, we will amend the resolution in two days, but I got a promise on two of them, but promises we still forge ahead. They say they will pay, or the closer said they would pay when they made a mistake, which is sometimes the system here.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Okay, now we'll open the public hearing for special assessments for unpaid infectious tree removal. Kevin?
Mayor Pro Temp, members of the council, the city has adopted tree programs, obviously for Dutch elm, I think there's the ash concern and so forth, but in any time that the city staff are called to a property or some concerned citizens notice a tree that is in violation of the tree program, in which case a dying Dutch elm would be, on private property, the city will notify that individual to remove the tree. Subsequent to that time period lapsing where they take no action, the city will then remove those trees, subsequently take a bill for the work and the labor and the vehicles, and send the bill to that property owner. After so many days of not paying the bill, the city then takes those to the council to consider a hearing, to assess those for collection on next year's 2015 taxes. It is staff's recommendation, after taking any testimony, that these dollar amounts against the properties listed be certified for collection next year.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to comment? Okay, seeing and hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it to the council.
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt a resolution certifying the amount of unpaid infectious tree removal charges to the county auditor for collection in 2015.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt a resolution that will certify the amount of unpaid infectious tree removal charges to the county auditor for collection in 2015. Further discussion? Councilmember DeBlick.
One question or clarification, is this infectious disease tree, or disease tree is considered more than just Dutch elm? I know that was one in the past that we had removed, does that include the ash and?
Is there oak wilt? I guess I'd have to learn how many tree programs we have. I know we have the Dutch elm, I know we have the ash. That ash beetle was serious for a while back, I'm not sure about oak and oak wilt. Did we adopt programs on all three?
Mayor Pro Temp, members of council, I'm not exactly sure on the other programs, but I can sure find out and get back with you as soon as I can.
I think that would be good information to bring back to the full council at our, maybe at our next meeting.
I can do that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Roll call.
Councilmember Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That passes. Next item on our agenda is a Wilmer City Council open forum.
Mr. Mayor Pro Temp, I'm sending you three names that are on the sign-in sheet.
Okay, if you could tell me who the first was?
Mr. Bob Score would be the first one.
Okay, Mr. Score, please identify yourself and your address.
Bob Score, 617 Southwest 14th Street, Mayor Pro Temp, council members. Got a few quick questions here, like to know where we're at on the auditorium, and I'd like to know, is that roof fixed yet? Or is that, the bids up for that roof? When Ingham was here, before you say anything, Kevin, before, when Ingham was here, before we left, I asked him, I said, has the bids went up for that? Oh, not yet, he said, because we really hate to do the roof, because we don't, we might have some changes on it, and I said, yeah, but isn't it getting wet in there? And he said, well, only when it rains. Now, that answer just kind of struck me wrong. I was gone last week for a while, when I came back, I heard we had over three inches of rain, now we had over just about five, that's eight more inches. If that building is getting wet, and continues to get wet, and we're working on the inside, it doesn't compute with me that that's the correct procedure we're doing here, I'm just wondering what's going on.
Okay, and I think the best way to handle that is for, to have staff get back to you on the specifics.
No, excuse me, but, you know, I hear that answer so much, why, Kevin, can you give me a quick answer on that?
You know, but here's, I don't want to get into a debate, no, just a minute. The purpose of the open forum is for people to come and give us their opinions, it isn't really a questioning thing, and if you have a question, we are more than happy to get the answers back to you.
You mean to tell me you don't have this answer?
I do not.
Well, I'm not, I'm not asking you.
I do not.
Can I get an answer, or should?
I am following the direction of the Mayor Pro Temp.
Okay, alright, so let's scratch it.
I just want to follow up with one other thing, we're also going to be discussing the auditorium, some things that are going on in there under the Finance Committee agenda.
The other one, storm water issue, I don't like to hear 100 urain anymore, are we getting something accomplished with that, or is it just a kind of copacetic here, is it just sitting there? My question is, again, if we aren't going to do anything, can we get some signs up at the intersections that flood out really severe? And I got one other question is, I was down on 10th and Candy Y, walking around through that water and watching people just about, they weren't slowing down at all for that thing, but I noticed that the sanitary sewer covers are right in the middle of that deep water. How much water are we getting absorption through them covers and going into the sanitary sewer? Does anybody, can anybody answer that?
You know, I don't know, but I would imagine that there's going to be discussion at some point in time on this last rainfall, and maybe, maybe we can get a little bit of an update from our, from our engineer, how he viewed the rainfall that happened last weekend and the Friday before, so, Sean, do you have any thoughts on how it went?
Thanks, Mayor Pro Temp, members of council. Yeah, the last rainfall, as with the multiple rainfalls we had in June, were much the same in the fact that the storm system we currently have in place did exactly what it's designed to do, and that's hold the water in the detention basins, as well as the intersections, for the most part. Now, obviously, there's going to be some potential wet basements and things of that nature, but the storm system was at full capacity, it's at full capacity below us downstream, so that it can't get out of our town any faster than it currently does. Those same intersections, if you to go, if you go back in two to three hours, would be dry. So it does drain, it drains slowly, but for the most part, the system does exactly the way it's, what it's designed to do. As far as the, the exact numbers of volume of water that can go through those manhole covers, I can do some calculations for you and get that number, but I don't know the exact numbers, it's, I know they open it up, it acts like an inlet, then instead of a, instead of a solid manhole cover.
Okay, if you could get that calculation and get that information to Mr. Score, that would be helpful.
I'm just, I'm just kind of curious on that, because, you know, they're, like I say, they're right in the middle there, and I did look downstream, and I know everything, how it works here, but my, so, anyway. One other quick question, on a truck issue for the city, we, can't we purchase that in Wilmer?
I think the truck discussion is going to come up under Public Works, I believe, so we'll, we'll talk about that then, but, but understand this, that it goes for bits.
No, no, I understand that.
Okay, alright.
No, I'm just asking.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Good evening, Pro Temp, Anderson and council. I'm still concerned about the health of this council. You say there is no problem, but some of you blame the outside interest groups. What about the rumored groups that you have? Shouldn't the citizens of this good city be made aware of who you are dealing with? What about the smirky looks and the rolled eyes? You still come across as being a good old boys' club, no women allowed, and the attitude, my way, no way, or outsourcing. What does this do to the morale of the city workers? Grow up, this is the 21st century. For those of you who have been on the council for years, and you know who you are, you should not have to keep asking if I'm in compliance, unless you like to hear your own voice. We, the citizens, all know about your day jobs, and we don't have to be, keep being reminded at each meeting. In closing, I would like to thank the fine work, fine workers in the Public Works Department. They were out in the rain on Friday, and yes, I am in an intersection that floods, I'm at 722 Second Street, Southwest, and yes, it does go down fairly quickly. But last Friday, you could almost say that it was dealing with an act of God, four to five inches in, of rain in a short period of time. Hats off to them for working and doing such a good job. Thank you for letting me express my concerns and my praises.
Thank you.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name's Bob Enos, I'm at 905 Trot Avenue. I think some of what I have to say here, and it won't take long, I don't think, might relate to some of Betty's comments, and it has to do with the open meetings law and transparency in general. You know, high technology, it's a blessing and it's a curse. We've noticed here, and many people that I talk with on a regular basis couldn't help but notice, watching fast fingers flying on smartphones during meetings, you all have internet access in the course of a meeting now as well, and this is an issue now that's come up, it's, it's a first world problem, it's an issue that's come up in many governments around the country for about the last four years now. So far, it's been taken up in Madison, Wisconsin recently, the government there passed a city council, I should say, passed a policy on the matter, it's been taken up in several cities in Massachusetts, in Texas, in Florida, in the state of California, and in Arizona. Here's the issue, three issues. The first one, I'm not sure we can legislate, and it has to do with etiquette. You know, when we go to the movies, we see the sign that comes up that says, please turn off your personal devices. If we go to church, we're expected not to turn on our, be looking at our smartphones during service. If we go onto an airplane, somehow we can manage to do without our smartphones for an hour or two while we're on the plane. I think it's time for this council, as many councils throughout the country are doing now, to take up that same issue now, and to develop a policy that would assure the public that when an open meeting is going on here, that there aren't any other conversations being held electronically, that in a quorum situation would form a public record. In San Diego, for instance, about two years ago, the issue came up, and the local paper, under the Freedom of Information Act, required, or requested, I should say, copies and records of all texts and email, emailing, Facebook, Twitter, the whole nine yards, during the time at which meetings were going on. One of the things that was uncovered that they, was that they actually found quarums of council members who were communicating electronically during deliberations on activity in order to position themselves strategically, to know when to make a motion, who would second the motion, to maximize their opportunities for getting legislation passed. I'm not accusing anyone here of doing that. The fact remains, though, that the capability and the potential to do that sort of thing now exists more than ever before. Three issues that I think are exposed by high technology abuses in a scenario like this, the first one, the obvious one, is etiquette. It's not, it's certainly, all of you should be able to expect that when deliberations are held by your body, that anyone that you're doing business with in this room, both at your tables and at staff level, should be giving complete 100% attention to the deliberations, nothing more important is coming across on your smartphone than what's going on here right now. If your kids have a problem, let them get in touch with Mr. Halliday, he could pass along the message to you that there's a problem at home, but you know, we've heard this for years and years, we did just fine without computers and smartphones. This should be the one venue where we continue to be able to do that. The second area of abuse that I think we need to talk about is the fact that all of you are able to, because of your internet connections, you're all in a position where you could receive advice and direction from people who are not sitting in this room, people who may have special interests on deliberations that come before your body, and people that are watching these meetings should not have to wonder what's being said behind the scenes while a meeting is going on. And thirdly, we shouldn't have to wonder whether or not there are conversations going on between you folks and staff when the meeting is going on. What this all comes down to is, the moment you guys have a quorum, that means that everything that goes on around decision-making process here should become a part, by law, has to become a part of the public record, and we don't want to have to police people's cellphones or email accounts. What I would like to see you folks do is to throw around some ideas for a policy whereby as soon as the Pledge of Allegiance has said, you shut that router off here so no one has internet access, and you put your phones away, then no one has to wonder. It would just be a good show of your interest in assuring the public that everything that goes on here is transparent, and we don't have any discussions behind closed doors, most especially when a meeting's going on. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that didn't sign up that wishes to speak?
Thank you very much for letting me speak without signing up, just Carol Lohmer.
Name and address, please.
From 1313 L.A. Avenue Northwest. I'm standing here, though, as the community representative to the Wilmer Community, Wilmer Community Activity Center, I represent the community there, and with the changes that are going on there with Leon Freeman, that's been, that's resigned from there, and I know there's changes that are going on, and some new positions being developed and that type of thing, as one of the wise folks in this community, otherwise known as one of the old folks in the community, and there's getting to be more of me all the time, that I would ask that you look at that as to how that building will be run, and the activities and the programs that will be there, and where it will be going currently, Steve has said that it will be under the school, because that's how it was set up with the joint powers, I would just ask that you look at that, and perhaps that maybe needs to be changed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone, yes, we have one more.
Tony Freeberg, 1310 15th Street, Southwest. First, let me apologize for my appearance, I'm a pastor and normally not this casual, and I also do chaplain work with the city, and I want to thank you for allowing Pastor Paul and myself to do that. And so I'd come to you tonight as a citizen, and sometimes I do my best thinking mowing the yard, and I was doing that tonight, and then I saw a neighbor come, he's on the council, at about a quarter to seven, I thought, okay, God, there's still time to go talk to these friends, so here I am. I know that some of you are aware that there is a group of people that meet Tuesdays at noon, and we pray, we believe in the power of prayer, and I would trust, and I hope that you do too, because there is going to come a time in our country's history, or in the future of our community, that we're going to all, you're going to make a call for us to come and to pray. I believe in preventative prayer, I believe that prayer can prevent things from happening. We used to meet in the council room right next to us, or that conference room, then we moved to the fire station, I thank you for allowing us to do that. Now we meet at the Christian School Tuesdays at noon. So I make two invitations to you, two invitations. One is an open invitation for all of you, even the city staff, who we pray for every Tuesday, to come and join us, to share what the concerns are that you're dealing with in the city. Again, I'll say that prayer does make a difference, so we invite you to come to that. Even if you're a skeptic when it comes to prayer, I would say, come and join us, alright, and maybe you'll be converted. And the second invitation would be, I would invite you to open your council meetings with prayer. There's been a lot of discussion about disunity, and in the pastoral realm, at the Ministerial Association, we discuss church unity in the community. I believe that if you wanted to demonstrate unity as a council and as a city, you would begin your meetings with prayer. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. One last call, is there anyone else? Alright, let's move on with, with the agenda, the next thing is the Finance Committee meeting, and that was a Finance Committee meeting that was held Monday, August 25th, at 4:45 PM. First item on our agenda was public comment, and there was no one there to comment. Our next item had to do with some liquor license violations, and pursuant to a July 10th, 2014 liquor compliance check conducted by the Wilmer Police Department, staff presented us a list of retail liquor establishments that violated Municipal Code Section 3-10, minimum penalties for violations of state or city ordinances resulting from the sale of alcoholic beverages. Two establishments incurred their first violation, for which representatives were present to explain measures being taken to eliminate further violations, including enrolling all employees in compliance check training programs on an annual basis. The two establishments involved were VFW Post 1639, represented by Deb Zeiner, and KRA Speedway, represented by Justin Hedkey. In addition, one establishment, El Tapatio Mexican Restaurant, incurred a second violation with a penalty of $1,000 per City Ordinance 1320, and it should be noted that that fine has been paid in full. That discussion was all for information only. The next item was a proposal made to us by Mr. Dan Grotheus. Staff reviewed an email sent from Mr. Grotheus, the prior owner of land northwest of the new airport runway, proposing a negotiated rental rate for Right of Way 2, which he leases from the city. Mr. Grotheus has made previous inquiries of the council to negotiate the rental rate, and on two prior occasions, the council felt there should be no change in how staff conducts the land rental procedure. Mr. Grotheus was present once again to request special bidding criteria, since he lost acreage from the imminent domain taking of his land. He proposed averaging the annual rents per acre of the 11 parcels that we put out for bids, and add $20 for the parcel in question, $20 per acre. Following a lengthy discussion, there was a motion made to approve the option of averaging the 11 parcels plus $20 per acre for two years. That motion was subsequently seconded, and then there was an amendment to that motion that the average be conducted using the sixth highest rates on the parcels, plus the $20 per acre for four years. So that's what was passed. So- So I would introduce a motion based on what the Finance Committee did, that Mr. Grotheus be allowed for the period of four years, that we average the six highest rental rates that we get of those that we bid out, add $20 per acre to that, and that was what he would be, have to pay for that land.
Second.
Okay. Motion. It's a little different when I'm Finance Chair, plus I have to tell you what the motion was. So the motion, again, is that we average six parcels, the six highest parcels, add $20, and that would be the rate that Mr. Grotheus would pay for the four years, and that is the length of time that we do the land bids for. Discussion. Oh, Councilmember Nelson.
Just clarification, this was a one, I mean, we're doing this for four years, but this is just, it's not like a renewable, this is a one-time, see how it goes. And he did agree to this, correct?
He did, and you're right. It's a one-time thing.
Okay.
Okay, this is.
Just for the clarification, Mr. Mayor Protam, he was not required to make a bid on any parcels at all, he can just, it's just the one parcel he's interested in?
If you approve this motion, he would not be required to bid on this particular parcel. I mean, if he chose to bid on other parcels, he would have to follow a bid process, but he is concerned about one specific parcel. So this parcel would be removed from the bidding process, and handled in this manner where the six highest bids received on the remaining parcels would be averaged, and then $20 per acre would be added to that, and he would enter into that agreement to rent it for the period of four years.
And just for further clarification, this is a unique parcel. It's a pie-shaped piece, he farms both sides of it, and it makes it difficult if he doesn't have that piece. Further questions? Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam. Just further clarification, this was his land that the city took for the future runway, and he wasn't happy about giving it up, even though we did pay a fair market price for it at that time. And the last four years, he rented it, but someone else got the bid, and he had to rent it back from.
That's right.
A person that didn't actually farm it, so.
Yep.
I think it's fair to let him farm his former land.
I think it's a reasonable compromise. We'll see how it works during this four-year period, and if it's still available four years from now, we'll have to take a look at it. All right.
Mr. Mayor Protam.
Yes.
I think it's great that you're reconsidering this, because he's brought it to you several times before. I think it's a fair compromise. If I remember right, during the discussion, he was talking about that, or I think Mr. Halliday might have explained it once very thoroughly, that the attorneys that were used in the past with other land acquisitions had some clause in the agreement with the city that was, that made it available for them to bid and have a better shot at renting out that parcel of land. Is it possible that we renegotiate or to review that existing contract that we have with them on the land purchase so that it would be similar to the other properties that we purchased land from or acquisition land from?
I want staff to answer, but I wouldn't think so. And, you know, each land acquisition is unique, and each lawyer, each landholder had their own lawyers, and they worked out their deal. Now, I don't know if it would be appropriate to go back on one and not other.
I would not recommend reopening those settlement agreements or reopening those proceedings and such. I mean, I think, you know, those were all eminent domain proceedings that were resolved and settled, and I wouldn't recommend that we reopen that process.
And I think the other land, former landowners seem to be satisfied with where they are. This one was, has been very unique.
Okay.
Okay, Councilmember Fagerly.
One other thing. What Councilman Amen was talking about was, there was two property owners at the new wastewater treatment. They actually wanted the city to sell or buy the land from them, so we did. And in that, there was a clause, they could rent that land back for five years, and then after five years, it was opened up, so.
This is a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes. The next item is auditorium change orders, and I'll go through part of this, and then I'm going to call on Kevin to discuss another change order that apparently just come in. But staff explained that recently accepted bids on the city auditorium remediation project, including alternate four, which planned for the capping and lead containment of basement ductwork in the lower floor at the base of the stairs, saving $11,000. After the initial ward on that project, the final mechanical plan was received, which indicates a conflict with the space needed for the finished product of alternate number four, so $11,000 will need to be added back into the contract as change order number one. Staff also explained that two mechanical shafts at the east end of the auditorium running vertically from the lower floor through the roof can remain and be capped in place, and that would result in $5,000 savings. Now, Kevin, if you would explain what's come up in the past day or so.
Mr. Mayor Protam, members of the council, the first change order of $11,000 is as stated. The second change order listed here had an initial value of $5,000 to leave that ductwork in place. Greg Myers, a Midwest environmental consultant who's been leading the activity environmentally for the cleanup, felt that the labor saved in that proposal didn't reflect exact prices, and renegotiated that price with Echo, who now put in a value of $9,000 saved to that change order. So change order number two, we'd like to add, or leave at $9,000, so at this point, we're $2,000 more in the contract. We have a new change order for $1,200. Underneath certain carpet areas, they found additional asbestos tile that need to be removed, and Echo gave a price of $1,200 to get that out of the way, and our consultant felt that that was a very appropriate cost. So what we are reflecting in all these change orders nets out at $3,200 more. We add up $11,000, take away $9,000, and add back $1,200. It is staff's recommendation that we make these change orders to their contract totaling an increase of $3,200.
Councilmember Dockin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam. Is there any reason we don't have graphics going so that the public and those that are here could see? I mean, do we have a graphic of the city auditorium so we could show what we are talking about, so we have a better idea, other than just verbally what we're doing? We usually have that up and running.
If we, I don't know if we have anything or not.
Sorry, Mr. Dockin, we did not put the documents that you probably had in your packet up on the screen.
Yeah, we should always have that up and running so that the public sees what is happening, you know? It's just not acceptable, quite frankly.
Okay. What would we like to do? Councilmember, questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam. A quick question first, just so I have this understood. We were looking at a $5,000 saving, and now we're looking at a $3,200 net overage.
No.
No, sir. We had a $11,000 increase because we had to, right, tell them to take that ductwork out at the base of the steps, between the gun room and the mechanical room. Then they were looking at saving $5,000 more, now we're saving $9,000. It's an additional $4,000 to our benefit.
So instead of the $6,000, it's $3,200. The $6,000 more, it's $3,200 more.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Then I will move staff's recommendation, as Kevin Ridda to us.
Second.
Okay, we have a resolution that will have no change order, no change to change order one. Change order two will go to a $9,000 savings. Change order number three, which is new, will be an increased cost of $1,200. Okay. Further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dockin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tabliek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes. Item number six has to do with the Zamboni purchase. Staff explained that the purchase of a Zamboni ice resurfacer machine is included in the 2015 Vehicle Replacement Program. Only one company in the United States manufactures this type of Zamboni. A quote was received from them in the amount of $131,210, less a trade-in value of approximately $20,000 to $40,000. Staff is requesting to order the Zamboni now in 2014, but the city would not take delivery until 2015, as it takes up to nine months for an order to be completed and delivered. It was noted that the 2015 Vehicle Replacement Program includes $130,000 for the purchase and replacement of a new Zamboni ice resurfacer machine. We asked if the old Zamboni should be sold instead of traded in, and staff is going to look into that. And we also had some concerns regarding authorizing capital expenditure before officially adopting the 2015 Vehicle Replacement Program budget, and I'm going to ask our Finance Director, Mr. Okens, to help us out on that.
Thank you, Mayor Protam, Anderson, members of the council. Although there are ways that the council can assign or designate fund balances for 2015 capital items, I think it would be more appropriate, if it's the intent of the council to authorize the purchase of this in '14, to amend the 2014 Capital Improvement Program. The way that you would do that is you would just have less carryover, and the capital program for '15 would be reduced. When I was made aware of this this afternoon, I did go back and review the 2015 Capital Improvement Program, and there is a slight error in the minutes, there's $125,000 programmed for the Zamboni in the '15 program, not $130,000.
Okay.
So it would be my recommendation, again, to amend the 2014 Capital Improvement, since you are obligating the city if your intent is to authorize staff to sign the agreement.
Okay. Thank you. So the resolution, then, if we so chose, would be to amend the 2014 capital budget to include the $125,000 for this? Okay, thank you. Now, what would the council like to do? I will tell you that the committee thought that we should go ahead, there was a motion on the part of, and approved on the part of the Finance Committee to go ahead, and that was using 2015, but we're now hearing that we should use 2014, and that seems more appropriate. So I would be looking, go ahead.
Do we need to amend the motion, or delete it and make a new motion?
I think at this point, you could, the motion hasn't been introduced to the council, so you could make.
I did not introduce.
You could make a new motion, you could make a new motion right now.
If you are reading a resolution in there, I'm not certain. It has been amended, corrected anyway, to say, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Wilmer, that said purchase be approved, and that the 2014 Vehicle Replacement Program be amended to include this purchase.
Where were you reading that from?
A new resolution drafted that you should not, would not have in there. If you have a different resolution, it does not state that.
Well, I will move Kevin's recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to use 2014 capital budget money for this purchase. Further discussion?
Mayor Protam.
Councilmember Nelson.
Just maybe ask Mr. Resendine to address the need for this, as to where we're at with, why with it.
Mayor Protam, members of the council, the current Zamboni, we do have two Zambonis at the Civic Center Arena, one for each sheet of ice. The current Zamboni that's being replaced is 20 years old, and at that point in their life, their useful life, they need to recharge it. So it's either spend, I think Troy had talked about $25,000 or $30,000 to have a rebuild, and then you don't have any of the guarantees that a new warranty would have with a new Zamboni. So it's our intent that we would replace it with a new one, and that's what's driving this decision, is the tires need to be replaced, the batteries would not make it through the first month of this season, they were having to charge the batteries after every usage last year, and that's time-consuming. And bottom line is, we think the current Zamboni has met its useful life without a major investment in restoring that.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? A roll call.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Dockin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tabliek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. The seventh item on our agenda was removal of agricultural land exemption of special assessments. Staff provided information regarding current agricultural land exemption of special assessments. If the exemption is granted, it remains on the city deferment program until its useful life is attained. The useful life for a water main is 40 years, and a street is 20 years from the date of initial construction. It is being recommended that deferred and pending assessments for projects 1993, which was street improvements, and 1974, which was water main, heretofore exempted from payment pursuant to the agricultural exemption, be written off because they are now beyond their useful life. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution to remove parcel 95-908-0140 from the 1993 street assessment for $27,495, and parcel 95-908-0130 from the 1974 water main assessment for $3,517.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to remove those two parcels, one for 1993 and one for 1974. I guess I have a comment and perhaps a question. I'm wondering if it's, if this is unique, that we do these exemptions? Because here we are, we're writing off $30,000, $31,000. And I'm wondering if it's still appropriate, and I'm not expecting an answer right now, but I think I would like to request that that go on a Finance Committee agenda sometime, probably after the budget discussion. It doesn't need to be right away. All right. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dockin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tabliek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Under old business, we talked in the committee, and I asked for thoughts and options for funding some deferred maintenance issues, and it had been previously discussed that perhaps a levy increase would be appropriate. During that discussion, Councilmember Fagerly noted that there had been past discussions of a CenterPoint Energy franchise fee, as well as instituting insurance-paid fire call charges. Discussion also included scheduling council work sessions to discuss the Capital Improvement Program, community groups, pavement management, and other topics as may be requested. The committee directed staff to provide additional information on deferred maintenance costs of the city and potential new revenue sources. That's for information only, and that's going to be coming up probably in a work session, not Monday, I don't think, is it?
I know, we are not prepared to do it for Monday's session. We'll have some information, but I don't think we're prepared to.
Okay. So I would ask that council members, if you have thoughts and concerns and you need some additional information regarding this, please get that, get your requests into either the Finance Director or the city administrator, so that when we have the discussion, we have all the information that we might need. And, you know, we're not pushing to do anything, just seeing what we might, what might be the reasonable and responsible thing to do. Under new business, staff informed us that the Community Ed and Recreation Department Under new business, staff informed us that the community ed and recreation department is working with the Little Crow Archery Club to write a Minnesota DNR archery range development grant, which would require a match of $2,500 from the City of Wilmer Little Crow Archers, if approved. And that's just for information only, it was a heads-up that that was coming. So unless there's questions, I would move to file the minutes.
Second.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Protam, I'd like to go back to item number five for a little bit.
On which?
Five, with the auditorium.
Okay.
And maybe Kevin, can you update us on what stage the current project is at there, and where we are in the next phase, and the bidding out of the next phase, getting that auditorium opened up and back in use?
Councilmember DeBlique, members of the council, as you know, you've awarded a $190,000 environmental cleanup project to Echo out of Hastings, Minnesota. Approximately four weeks to conclude, to carry that out, almost dead on Midway. It's going well. We're cleaning up things, we're tearing out. I believe the asbestos has been completed, so the removal is done. If you drive by there, you'll see tons of bins, dumpsters, recycling dumpsters, they got the whole process in full steam ahead. So they're on target, and we expect to be done, depending on some things. They do some T-clip measurements, so I don't know what it stands for, because I'm not supposed to know how to know all these details, but some of the lead ratings are significantly higher than others, and those dumpsters will go to, well, depends on who will take them, certain areas, and the lower ones will go to our local landfill. In the middle of that, September 9, 3 o'clock, I believe, is the bid letting at City Hall for the contractors for putting the building back in its proper shape. We had a pre-bidders conference, we had three local contractors show up, some electrician firms were there, and already discussion and add a few amendments. But the advertising is out, the bid specs are picked up either at our office, but generally at The Architect, which is Engen and Associates, and they're ready to go. We will most likely, if all things are in order, go directly to the council September 15 with those bids, so that we don't lose more time and try to meet these details roughly. If it's awarded, then we should be done around Christmas. If you want me to answer the roof, I can. The roof has never been a concern. Somehow we got off on a bad track. In fact, the roof is actually pretty good. It'll last five years without doing any work. They once talked about the possibility of making some amendments to fix the screws on there and maybe get more life out of it, but that's an option that maybe will be considered, but otherwise you'll just see that on the roof replacement and the capital improvements project, five years down the road, which should probably be in next year's program. The gutters are bad, no doubt. The gutter and the gutter linings are part of the bid, and the tuck pointing of some of the damage that's done, but that's not a concern at all. And no water damage in the attic whatsoever from a four-inch rain. We have a few water spots downstairs, and we've kind of always had them, and there's some concerns of leakage in a certain area, which will be reviewed and parted construction. So water is not a concern. We are on target as best we can, hopefully we stay on target, and I guess my goal would be, on January 1, we'd have enough policies in place with our gun clubs that we are back in business. So the addendums that are coming to you, outside of a few minor things, the whole gun range reconstruct and mechanical system will come as one addendum. That's the plan of Engen, so you can see the whole cost of putting that back in place. And at this point, we just wait for September 9 to see those numbers. The budget is pretty much run out, from what we've awarded to date, from our consultants and our Echo out of Hastings, so those budget amendments will have to be addressed subsequent to the bids taken.
To answer your question. Any other questions? Councilmember Christiansen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam. On item number eight, the deferred maintenance issues that you were talking about and possible small levy increase, you know, couldn't we use some funds that aren't dedicated? I mean, we're not broke, like I used to say, and we do have funds set aside. Couldn't we start by using them instead of thinking of a levy increase? I mean, they are there, the taxpayers' money, and it's one possible place to start, at least, start a fund.
Yep. And if I could answer that, yes, that's one of the options, because we asked them to look at all options as far as additional funding is concerned. That certainly is an option that needs to be looked at.
Thank you.
Okay. If that's it, all in favor of filing the finance committee a minute, say aye.
Aye.
I propose that passes. Public Works, Public Safety, councilmember Christiansen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam. We did meet on August 26, 2014, at 4:45 PM. We called the meeting to order. Second item was public comment, nobody presented any comments, so we went on to item number three, which was accepting a project and authorizing final payment for number 1305, and this is a resolution. Our Public Works Director brought forth for approval the acceptance of project number 1305 and authorization of final payment to Dunick Incorporated in the amount of $6,444.21. Our council entered into an agreement with Dunick on June 7 of 2012 for the Trot Avenue Southwest improvements, in conjunction with the installation of the quiet zoning. Final pay request with quantities was submitted for consideration, and with the final construction costs falling just below the contracted price. After some discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed, to accept project number 1305 and authorize final payment to Dunick Incorporated in the amount of $6,444.21, and I will introduce that resolution.
Second.
Okay, we have a resolution before us to accept project 1305 and authorize final payment to Dunick Incorporated in the amount of $6,444.21. Questions? Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlique.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkin.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Item number four was to request purchase and replace the mechanic's pickup truck. This is also a resolution. Our Public Works Director once again brought forth for approval the purchase slash replacement of the mechanic's pickup truck at Public Works. The current pickup is a 2001 Ford F-250 and has mechanical problems that include using oil and transmission issues. Staff is requesting to replace it with a 2014 F-150 XLT for $27,837.70 from Nelson Auto Center Fleet Department in Fergus Falls, along with a Tommy lift gate for $2,560 from Towmaster Incorporated of Litchfield. The present 2001 Ford F-250 would be sold at the Public Works Auction, and in interim we use to hold the Tac Oil Distributor. Our 2014 capital lay vehicle and equipment replacement program included $37,353 for the purchase and replacement of this particular truck, with the total purchase price being $69,5530 under budget. Tax license and tools would be added at a later date. The committee questioned if Nelson Auto Center Fleet Department is included in the state contract purchase, and staff will provide this information at the council meeting, and I believe it was. Okay. Again, after some discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed, for the following, and I will introduce a resolution to approve this purchase of the 2014 Ford F-150 XLT with the Tommy lift gate.
Second.
Okay, we have a resolution before us to approve the purchase and replacement of the mechanic's pickup truck. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor Protam.
Yes, councilmember Amen.
Thank you. That was brought up here by the general public on the purchase of the vehicle. I've also had a few calls on that, and I think I explained it to them very well, that, you know, it's a public process, that everybody bids on the state pool. But I'm just curious if, maybe just for the public's information, if one of the staff people or the administrator could explain that process, so that the public isn't thinking we're not trying to take work away from people, but it is a public process that we have to go through, and as far as the request for proposals that were given, we have to accept a low bidder unless, for some reason, they can match it, I believe. But if somebody could maybe elaborate on that for the general public, I think it'd be time well spent.
Councilman Amen, Mayor Protam, members of the council, that is correct, although we don't, the City of Wilmer does not go through the bidding process and the low bidder process. That's done as a state. In fact, in this case, it's a multi-state issue, or a co-op is what it is. And what happens is annually, and this particular contract runs out September 30, in which case they'll, I assume they'll open up bids for the next year. And any car dealership in this particular case is available, or is allowed, or able to provide a bid to this co-op, and the low bids are accepted that are lowest responsible, or however they say it, bids would be accepted at that point. Then that list of vehicles is provided to the members of this co-op, which Wilmer, City of Wilmer is one, and so we don't have to go through the bid process. We pick a vehicle from that list that's there, and knowing that the state or this co-op in this particular case has gone through that entire process.
One other question. Is it, I know we use this for quite a few years, they've had the state pool, and I know the school system uses it also, so this is not really unique by any stretch of imagination. It's just being, trying to get the most, best price for the taxpayers and use the tax dollars. But is it possible to take any bid and, or any proposed vehicle that we have coming up and put it up for local bids in the county? Is that possible, or have we ever considered that, to keep it local or more local?
We certainly can. We certainly can do that, do that process as well, you know, but we would be required to bid it and then take the lowest responsible bid. You know, as the Public Works Director stated, you know, this is, the efficiency here is that the state has already done that and received the bid, and it saves some, saves time and some process in that, but it certainly could be bid individually and not be purchased through the cooperative.
Something to consider is just give local business people and employees there an opportunity to have a return on their investment. Thank you.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmember DeBlique.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That passes.
Item number five had to do with the acceptance of the Minnesota Public Facilities Authority to purchase a $3 million revenue note, series 2014-A. This is also a resolution. Once again, our Public Works Director brought forth for approval a resolution accepting the offer of the Minnesota Public Facilities Authority to purchase a $3 million general obligation sewer revenue note, series 2014-A, and authorizing execution of bond purchase and project loan agreement for the note. The funding will be utilized for the Lakeland Drive Sewer Lift Station project, and approval is necessary to proceed with PFA funding. Mr. Paul Jurek with Bowling Engineering, who was a consultant on this project, was present to answer any initial questions from the committee. After some discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed, for the following, and I will introduce the resolution. To approve the resolution accepting the offer of the Minnesota Public Facilities Authority to purchase a $3 million revenue series, revenue note, series 2014-A.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. There's a motion and a second, and a resolution before us is to accept the offer from Minnesota Public Facilities Authority to purchase a $3 million general obligation sewer revenue note, series 2014-A, and authorizing execution of bond purchase and project loan agreement for the note. Discussion. I have a question of staff. Why PFA? I mean, was that the only viable option? Is this such a small series that we do? We didn't call it a local consortium, or why did we?
Mayor Protam Anderson, members of the council, PFA is a subsidized loan where the state of Minnesota gets some federal money as well, and so the interest rate on this was 1%. And very similar to the financing on the original waste treatment plant, the bonds are subsidized through that extra financing that the state gets.
Okay, thank you. Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlique.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That passes.
Item number six was the old business. Several items here. First one, our Public Works Director, Sean Christiansen, displayed a piece of the Keurig In Place pipe that's being installed inside the existing concrete pipe over on Lakeland Drive. Our fire chief, Mr. Gary Hendrickson, provided an update on the fire department activities. He stated that so far in 2014, there have been 212 fire calls. The majority of the calls have been for unintentional alarm system activations and unintentional smoke detector activations. Our chief also noted the average response time from the station to the address is nine minutes and four seconds. Committee then questioned if we charged for false alarms, and our chief stated at this time, we do not. Chief Hendrickson indicated some insurance companies will offer the fire department $500 if there is a defined loss, from a provision under additional coverage in their insurance plan. Our chief also has been approached by insurance companies, offering the $500 for calls with defined loss, but has declined the donations, as he feels the homeowner's taxes are covering the services provided by the fire department. It has also felt that there is a charge placed on false alarms. If there is a charge placed on false alarms, it will deter people from calling 911, and that could be dangerous, and increase the possibility of fire fatalities and injuries. Chief Hendrickson also stated that if we were to have accepted the $500, it would have generated $6,500 in revenue for this year so far. Our committee questioned the staffing levels and application status for new firefighters, with Chief Hendrickson responding, he will be closing the application process this week, and there was not an abundant response. The ideal number of firefighters for the Wilmer Fire Department, he would like to see is 40. Current status is at 33 firefighters. The department is foreseeing losing another two firefighters in the next two months, and another five in 2017. Our state legislature is authorizing a $500 payment to firefighters in the 14 southwest counties for their service of employment in the years 2014, 15, and 16, as kind of a retention incentive. Chief Hendrickson did not believe it would be a great retention strategy, as it would be a significant cost to the citizens of Minnesota if it's paid out throughout the state. So once again, if anybody's interested in volunteering for the fire department, is a paid-on call fire department, please get ahold of our chief, Gary Hendrickson, call City Hall. We need a good, well-staffed fire department, and their time of nine minutes and four seconds for coming to a fire is pretty good. It's something we often take for granted in the City of Wilmer, these services that the ambulance, police department, and chief of the fire department provide, they're there shortly in any case of a call. Next item was our police chief, Mr. Felton. He noted that the jail census as, for August 26, was 104, and 75 of those being in County by County inmates. 25 of the inmates were from the Minnesota Department of Corrections, and two inmates were from Swift County and two from Big Stone County. Chief Felton responded to a question on immigration, hold inmates in the jail census, and stated the sheriff has stopped noting them on the jail roster and is not required anymore. The calls for service for the previous two weeks totaled 775, with a total of 1,498 calls since the last Public Works Safety meeting of July 29. That would have been one month's worth of calls. Majority of his calls are for traffic stops, followed by public cysts and suspicious vehicles. The committee then questioned the current drug activity, and Chief Felton reported that the drug task force ended a major investigation with 38 warrants signed. This investigation created a significant dip in drug activity and took key suspects off the streets, but there's still, it continues to be an issue with methamphetamines and marijuana. But only a small amount is found to be manufactured in the area, as most of it is brought up from Canada and Mexico. of the gang enforcement team remaining active to combat those issues from the Wilmer Police Department, Sheriff's Department, and multi-county drug and gang task force. Item number seven, under new business, Mr. Dawkin addressed the committee on Mr. John Lindstrand's requesting to use the city auditorium for his Veterans Day program this year since elections will be held there also on November 4th. Mr. Lindstrand would ask the asbestos project to be delayed one week to allow the Veterans Day program to be held on November 8th through the 13th. Committee was informed that due to the work occurring in the auditorium, the gym would not be available. And is there any further comment from staff on that to quantify that?
No, well, they'll be up high, man lifts will be in there, that'll be in full use.
So are we to understand though, the election will not be held at the auditorium?
No, the election will.
It will be.
All lead, all asbestos will be out by election time. Most likely no air flowing, but the election staff will be safe in there and they'll have that, but the gym should be in full use. That'll even be their staging area for many other things.
Okay.
And supplies and their mechanical equipment coming in, so there will be no opportunity to squeeze that in there.
Okay, so then the possibility of Mr. Lindstrand holding in the auditorium is definitely not.
Not feasible.
Not feasible.
No.
There was no further business coming for the committee and unless there's any questions, I would move to file these minutes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to file the Public Works Safety Committee minutes, discussion.
Question, Mayor Protem. I guess, do we have an alternate place for Mr. Lindstrom to?
I think we've offered Mr. Lindstrom a couple of alternate places. I don't know if he has found those to be acceptable, but I think we offered him the community center and such, and he's looking at that as well as some other locations.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. On the false alarms, don't we have a policy? You get so many and then we start charging? We used to do that when we had the state hospital. We'd get 20, 30 calls.
Councilman Fagerly, last March, we implemented a new alarm permit policy. So what we're trying to accomplish there is if you have a permit for $30, $10 each year, renewable every three years, that gives the opportunity for those businesses to get their alarm repaired, send their documentation into the fire department to illustrate that they have completed those documents, those repairs, hence not being charged the $500. The idea is to minimize false alarms and instill that those people that do have an alarm repair them as needed. If they do not have a permit, they could be charged, but what I'm trying to work with the business community now is if they don't, it's an educational process when we do get an alarm there, let them know that they need to get a permit and let them know kind of that process. So in the past, yes, there was a significant charge for over, I think it was after 10 fire calls, they were given that. On that note, just to clarify with what your question was for the $500 charge, is that that does fall under the additional insurance with a policyholder? And with that, it would increase the rates if they were to utilize that, it would be a ratable claim, so their insurance rates would go up. And I'm currently in the process of trying to poll other communities within Candy, Ohio, if they're using it. As of right now, I'm not finding a lot of communities that are actually utilizing that as a surcharge, if you will, back to the, for the fire department.
Okay. If they did use it, that means they had a fire.
Correct. It has to be.
So their rates are going to go up no matter what then?
Well, and that's the clarification piece. It has to be a recordable loss. So if the fire department gets called there for a, say their smoke alarm goes off for burnt food, but there's not a recordable loss, they cannot, they could submit it, but the rates would go up, but they probably wouldn't be accepted as, because there was no real loss.
Yeah. My, my motion would have been when there's an actual fire or smoke damage and we're called there.
Okay, so that's.
No false alarms or anything like that.
Okay.
Just actual damage. Because if they're offering you $500, that means they were grateful that you saved the property and they didn't have more of a loss.
Yeah, it's a part of the additional, additional, they do give that State Farm families, American family and farmers that I checked with in the community all offer that $500 reimbursement, if you will, to the fire department if the insured submits a claim for that. So it really depends on if they, sometimes they don't always submit a complaint.
Most people don't because fire departments don't send them a bill.
Correct.
But I know Atwater does and I know Spicer does.
Yep, they do send bills depending on this, if it's a bill.
And I know my homeowners, I have $500 coverage for in town and I got $1,000 out at the lake.
Yep, you can incrementally increase that.
And increase it. And it's only a few dollars more to add that coverage though.
Correct.
But they're willing to pay it if there's a damage or a fire.
Yes, they are willing to pay it and I did direct that to members of Public Safety, Public Works Committee, if the direction of councils want me to accept that, I will. At this time, I believe it's part of the taxpayers, part of their tax dollars that they're paying and that's just my personal opinion, but if there's direction to accept, I'll gladly do that the next time there's a recordable loss.
Thanks.
Other questions? If not, all in favor of filing the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes. Okay, introduction of an ordinance to amend chapters eight and 13 of the municipal code relating to permits and sidewalk use. Mr. Peterson.
Mayor Protem, Anderson, members of the council. Staff has prepared a very simple ordinance that amends the municipal code. The sections being proposed for amendment would allow for businesses to use the sidewalks for seven days a week with a permit and it currently restricts them to six days per week. It eliminates the requirement for the daily removal of property, which would allow them to leave tables and chairs on the sidewalk overnight. And the other amendment also allows consumption of alcoholic beverages outside the building on the city sidewalk if the alcoholic beverages are sold or served by a valid licensed establishment. It's the staff's recommendation that this ordinance be given a hearing on September 15th.
Move to approve.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to set a public hearing on this at our next council meeting of September 15th, 2014. Discussion. Councilmember Christiansen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Where does the city's liability begin and end with this, with the businesses having their chairs and tables out on public property basically because the sidewalk is the city's?
It's a very good question and it's one we took into consideration. The ability to utilize any portion of the sidewalk does require a permit and there is an indemnification process in the permit, included in the permit process. Beyond that, I would defer to the city's legal counsel to provide you with the actual legal explanation for that.
I read about the indemnification certificate, but it still, you know, it's our property. Maybe Mr. Scott could address that.
Councilmember Christiansen, the provision in the ordinance requiring the permit to indemnify the city for any loss that is caused on the property in which they're operating their cafe, I mean, I think that does sufficiently protect the city. It's as simple as that.
They're basically signing off on it then.
Yeah, they're saying anything that happens on our property that you're letting us to use as a cafe or restaurant, as an extension of our facility here, we will indemnify the city if our equipment causes loss.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes. Consideration of agricultural land exemption of special assessments, Kevin.
Mayor Protem, members of the council, you have before you in the resolution, a detailed list of the landowners, the project, and the dollar amounts that have for many years been deferred by the agricultural exemption subset of our comprehensive assessment policy. Each year, these landowners are sent notification requiring them to make a determination whether they're going to continue with the land being placed in agricultural use for the next crop year, 2015. You have before you those items that are there. The only changes are two that you earlier removed are removed from this resolution. And then if you'll take note in item number three, fair size amount on the bottom of the list of those properties for project 1404 is the 12th Street Southeast Street that cost roughly $360,000 between Bethesda Heritage and the Gash Properties. Bethesda certainly needing that street and will be paying their assessments, most likely spread over 10 years. And the neighbor to the east requesting that be added to the agricultural deferments. But they all qualify pursuant to our current policy and it is staff's recommendation that we adopt the policy continuing to defer those agricultural deferments.
Thank you.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for a resolution exempting qualifying agricultural landowners of special assessments. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Aye.
Amon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That passes. We have a consideration of Cambridge Third Edition Preliminary Plat. Mr. Peterson.
Mayor Protem, Anderson, members of the council. The planning commission recently reviewed and considered a plat called Cambridge Third Edition. It's a replat of a portion of Terraplane Estates. It's the third phase of a townhome development being developed by Kuzman's R E K Construction. The development is a six lot plat done as a planned unit development in its plan for twin homes. The planning commission approved the preliminary plat with conditions regarding the covenants and declarations, utility connections, existing assessments, and the restriction of parking being limited to one side on the private street. It's recommendation of staff that the council approve the preliminary plat of Cambridge Third Edition so the developer can move forward with the final plat.
Thank you.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plat. Is there further discussion?
Got a question.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Now, this is a private street. Is he going to do concrete again?
It's, the street's already built. There will be no, yeah, it's being constructed, these homes will be constructed fronting the existing concrete street. It's Terraplane Drive, I believe it's called.
All right, thanks.
Okay, and this is a motion, Kevin.
Standing.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes. All right, moving into new business. Councilmember Amon, you had an item you wanted to discuss.
Yeah, just coming into the town this weekend, past weekend, I just looked at the signs that we have in the city of Wilmer. I remember back in 1986, one campaign issue was we need to improve the entrances to our community. And shortly after that, it was thanks to the hard work, I believe it was the J.C.'s that put together a fundraising effort and with our cooperation, they located some signs, welcome to Wilmer signs in the community. And they're 28 years old and I think maybe it's time we look at replacing those and making them more appropriate to the size and the stature of our community, the community project. I'm not sure who we could bring it to or we could discuss it with, but I just think it's time, maybe we should review that.
Okay, just for clarification, are you talking about the big brick ones or are you just talking that are at the, I think there's four of them.
There's about four of them, yeah.
Okay.
On the east side and over by the state hospital.
Yep.
Some of them are down pretty low, you can't see them.
Okay, all right.
Might be an improvement.
If staff would make a note of that.
I've just made a note of that. We will look at that and what some options might be.
All right, thank you.
May no other, new business or old business?
Of course.
Yes, sir, Councilmember Christiansen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Speaking of the entrances, the sign that is down up on the north side, has there been any consideration of redesigning that or maybe adding an LED, you know, moving sign up there for, I know what's happening in other cities, it catches people's eyes much better, or are we going with the same design?
Well, I'm not sure what the status of that one, that was damaged in an accident and if we've gotten settlement from an insurance company or where we are in that process.
Yeah, Councilmember Christiansen, I don't know about the amounts or the detail of the settlement, but I just recently found out that the investigation is complete and we can look into whatever the.
I think we could look at it as part of the entrance signs. I mean, if, you know, it might be before replacing that one, if there's a desire to change the entrance signs, I guess we would probably hold off on doing something with that one and bring some proposals back and see what those costs would be because it would set a standard, I guess, for the remainders.
I think that would be good to maybe go to community development or Public Works somewhere and discuss that.
We can certainly.
I would agree.
We can certainly look into some options and then come back.
Put that on a committee.
In the meantime, we just will probably not replace that north sign.
Until decision is made, okay.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? Councilmember DeBleek.
Yeah, it was brought up in public forum about basically electronic usage during council meetings and iPad internet usage. Could that item be put on one of the committee agendas?
We actually have an iPad, an electronic policy that you all signed when you were given your iPad. I can certainly get a copy of that back out to you to refresh you, but it addresses the issues that Mr. Enos raised. We've already addressed those.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Does the League of Minnesota Cities have a ruling or a determination or a position on that? I'm sure it's been discussed.
Our policy was modeled after the League's recommended policy, I believe.
I think that's correct. I certainly remember reviewing the policy at the time you issued your iPads and I do remember that we did include language addressing the issues that were discussed in the open forum.
Okay.
But, you know, it certainly has been a year or more since you all were issued the iPads and sent that out, so can certainly send that out to remind folks, but it addresses most of the issues that Mr. Enos stated. You know, of course, I would note that certainly some of the ability with our agenda software is to take notes on the agenda, so some of what people may be perceiving is simply individuals taking and writing notes on the agenda, because I certainly do that myself.
Mayor Protem.
Councilmember Nelson.
It wouldn't hurt for us just to have an update on our iPad training. I think that we're still struggling some. Some people don't have it downloaded when they get here or downloaded in the software that allows you to do that. And I think even there's some cumber, some, with some of the things that you try to save, so it wouldn't hurt us to have iPad and review the etiquette and have a conversation.
We can certainly do that. I think we use some community ed and rec staff to do that, so we can certainly look to schedule another training time.
Okay. One thing that crossed my mind before we adjourn, Councilmember Johnson gave us really nice colorful information on the Wilmer Community and Activity Center and I wonder if he wanted to make any comments on that or would you just like us to read it?
Well, yeah, you should read it and memorize it.
Well, test next time.
No, this is a brand new promotional items that they've put together. I think they're rather nice.
Nicely done.
And show some, you know, a lot of the activities that are available there.
Okay.
And the staff worked on that and they did a really nice job.
All right, let's talk about committee meeting dates. Finance will meet Monday, September 8th at 4:45. Public Works, Public Safety, Councilmember Christiansen.
Tuesday, September 9th, 4:45.
Okay, Community Development.
Thursday, September 11th, 4:45.
And?
We will need a labor committee. Councilmember Amon.
Labor, the 10th.
Yes, we will need one, thank you.
Labor, the 10th?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Is there anything else to come before the city council?
Move to adjourn. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn? We are adjourned. We are adjourned.